Good evening. It's 6:30 on September 10th, 2024. I'm calling this session of the Bastrop City Council to order. The City of Bastrop reserves the right to reconvene in recess or realign its regular session or call it executive session or order of business at any time prior to adjournment. I'm looking in the audience and do not see our leaders of the pledge tonight, so we are going to lead our pledge if y'all will. I'm sorry, y'all here? Y'all snuck in, please. Juan Ramirez and Arwin Ayala, would y'all please rise? Y'all can stand right here, right in the middle. You'll give the pledge and then he'll take pictures of you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honored Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Let's give these people a round of applause. Really appreciate it. They are part of the Bastrop High School Bear Tech Robotics. So, any questions y'all have on robotics, ask them before they get out. Thank you. And please remain standing. We're going to ask one of our outstanding police chaplains and an outstanding member of our community, Dale Burke, to come up and lead us in prayer.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we just thank you so much for this council here. Lord, every person here has been called according to your purpose here tonight. Lord, I thank you for the city manager, for the secretary that's just standing in here, and, Lord, for the mayor and each person here. Lord, I thank you as we come together, there will be peace and order in every decision made here tonight. And, Lord, you said in your word that all things work together for them that are called according to your purpose. And, Lord, we thank you that you bring everything together tonight, all the plans and everything here. Lord, you care about every detail for this city. This is a blessed city, Lord. We thank you. There's growth that's going on and there's many decisions to be made. But we thank you for unity in all of this and we thank you, Lord, that we hear your voice. Each person here, each council member, each citizen here hears your voice tonight and we thank you. Father, that all the decisions made here will honor this city. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Burke. Y'all may be seated. We'll immediately move to presentations. First of all, the mayor's report. Council, we received notice on September 30th that Judge Dugan had submitted his resignation from our Ethics Commission. As mayor, I send him a note of appreciation for his dedicated service to the city. I want to take this moment to publicly thank him for his diligent service on one of our citizen-driven volunteer commissions. He will be extremely difficult to replace in this vital function. Thank you, Judge Dugan. Speaking of our citizens, advisory boards and commissions, I'm in the process of appointing and reappointing folks, subject to our council's confirmation, to our 13 various boards and commissions. Currently, we have 43 openings and I have 21 applications. I don't think the math works out. So, anybody within the sound of my voice that would like to go online and fill out an application or reapply for our boards and commission, please do so. Those of y'all who know people who may want to apply, ask them to do so. We'd really appreciate it. Time's getting short. Finally, on August 31st, I was honored to be in attendance at the farewell ceremony for the Harriet Tubman: The Journey to Freedom exhibit. Congratulations to Doc Jackson and the Curville Community Center Board for a great program that included an outstanding keynote speaker with the grandmother of Juneteenth, Dr. Opal Lee. This 97-year-old living history dynamo electrified the crowd with the brief history of her accomplishments. Joining me at the event were Councilmember Meyer, Councilmember Fosler, Mayor Protim Kirkland, and Councilmember Lee, who is setting her own historical precedent in being the first Black female city council member in Bastrop and is doing an outstanding job representing all the citizens in our great community. That is it for my report. We will move on to city council's report. Mayor Protim Kirkland. Thank you. Councilmember Fosler.
Good evening, y'all. Just want to give a little shout out to Leadership and Love. The Women's Leadership Luncheon is September 24th. It's a Tuesday afternoon from 11:00 to 1:00. The Family Crisis Center puts it on. It's a fantastic, it's a fantastic event and sometimes people cry. I hear there's not going to be tears this year, so come, don't bring your Kleenex. It's going to be a joyous time. And also, I want to give a shout out to my dear friends Alex Henley and Elise Denisso who got married over the weekend right there at the courthouse. It was really lovely. Thanks, y'all.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Plunkett.
No, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Meyer.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, last Thursday, the Farm Street Opry had an amazing show and I just want to thank Kathy Danielson for the work that she does, but she also has a support crew because it takes a village, y'all, to do everything, doesn't it? So, to Steve Ballard, Bev Williams, Matt Johnson, Carly Davenport, who helped so much, and all of our staff here and volunteers, we thank you so much. And speaking of volunteers, and the mayor announced that we are taking application for different boards, I'm the liaison for the Main Street Advisory Board and Michaela Joyce is doing a fantastic job as our Main Street Director. So, please, we've got some slots to fill. Go on the city website, contact Michaela, contact me, and we'd love to have you. All you have to do is live in the city or in the ETJ to be on one of our boards.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Bastrop. Just a couple of things I wanted to mention that most of council went to the Texas disposal plant for them to give us a tour of their plant. I thoroughly enjoyed it, I think we all did. They are doing so much recycling, they're doing recycling that I didn't even know existed. So, that in itself was a learning experience, but we had an enjoyable time. We asked a lot of questions. They told us how open they are to being part of the community and working with the city on any issues or concerns that you have. So, I so appreciated them opening their doors to us and, please, guys, I know there's been a lot of questions about the change in the community. Feel free, please, I'm sure, to reach out to the city, then they will be able to answer your questions and give you the right answer. So, please reach out to them if you have any questions. I do want to talk about the library board, my library board. They're doing such good things at the library. The main thing I wanted to point out is last year, 57,208 people came through the doors for the entire fiscal year of 2023. We're not done with 2024 just yet, but 67,000 have walked through the library door for this fiscal year 24, and we still have some time left. So, I was thinking when we were going over those numbers yesterday, that's probably the most used building in the city besides the convention center. That's a lot of people and we appreciate people coming from all over. There was a comment from someone who just moved here from Florida and said that she had no clue what to do in this city until she went to our library. So, thank you, guys, for all that you do. And then, the last thing I did want to talk about is the Harriet Tubman exit from Bastrop and the grandmother of Juneteenth's present. I cannot, words cannot even explain the level of joy that I had in meeting this person. She was supposed to come here last year and her, at 97, well, how old is she, 97?
97.
97. Her schedule was so busy that she couldn't fit Bastrop in that year. So, I'm glad that Doc Jackson was able to meet with her and get her to come to see the Harriet Tubman statue off. We so appreciate her and I believe we may be working on some type of proclamation for her. It was asked at the event if Bastrop would do a proclamation for her for coming. So, hopefully, I think the mayor is going to be working on that. So, thank everyone for putting that event together. It was a wonderful event. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We should mention that Councilmember Meyer did give her a piece of Bastrop as a token of our appreciation, so thank you for doing that. We'll move on to item 4C, proclamation of the city council, the City of Bastrop, Texas, recognizing the month of September 2024 as National Preparedness Month. Madam Assistant City Secretary.
The proclamation reads as follows. Whereas the state of Texas historically leaves the nation a number of federally declared disasters, be they natural disasters, technological, or human caused, and whereas National Preparedness Month is an opportunity to inform and educate residents, businesses, schools, and communities to be more prepared by developing the capabilities needed to prevent, protect, against, respond to, recover from, and mitigate against all threats and hazards. And whereas the city of Bastrop, along with others in the Capital Area Council of Governments, CapCog Region, encourages all residents to participate in preparedness activities and are asked to review preparedness information at ready.gov and to sign up to receive alerts via warncentraltexas.org to become more knowledgeable and prepared. And whereas investing in the preparedness of ourselves, our families, businesses, and communities can reduce fatalities and economic devastation throughout our nation, and whereas emergency preparedness is the responsibility of all citizens in the city and county to make preparedness a priority with a goal of shared individual and community safety and resilience. Now therefore, Sylvia Correa Trevino, city manager of the City of Bastrop, Texas, do hereby proclaim September 2024 as National Preparedness Month and encourages all residents, businesses, schools, and communities to develop emergency preparedness and resilience plans and to register at warncentraltexas.gov to receive emergency alerts.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Assistant City Manager.
Mayor, I have one announcement. Sheila Lowe wanted me to, since we were doing preparedness tonight, the Disaster Preparedness and Resilience Fair is September 28th at 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at their new facility, which is the Bastrop County Community Center, which is 15 American Legion Drive, their new facility. They're going to be showing off the new facility. Fire Department will have their blow-up house and be lots of things going on. That's September 28th from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. So, encourage everybody to go. Thank you, sir.
Perfectly, and thank you. We will move on to 4D, receive the annual comprehensive financial report that period ending September 30th, 2023, which includes the independent auditor's report presented by the independent audit firm of Belt Harris Pechacek LLP. Ms. McElwain.
Hi. We have actually received our audited financial statements for fiscal year 2023, and actually it is Crowe, is it LLC?
LLP.
LLP. They merged in the middle of our audits. And this is Daniel Hebert that is here to give a quick presentation.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Daniel Hebert. I am a managing director with Crowe. We are formerly Belt Harris Pechacek. I've been part of the city's audit since 2019, so familiar with the area, familiar with the city. Before I begin, I do want to express my sincere gratitude to Edie and her staff for all of the help. Obviously, Edie coming in as a new finance director, chief financial officer, us going through our merge and transition. It was just a tumultuous time over the past several months and I can't thank her enough for her patience in working with us and stepping into a new situation. And obviously, to step into a middle audit is no fun. Nobody wants to do that, but she handled it like a champ and we really appreciate her and the staff and all the help that they were able to give us. I'm going to take you through a couple of key points in our report and then I'll take any questions that you all might have at the end. We'll start on page number 17. Page number 17 is our independent auditor's report. This is otherwise known as an opinion letter. I am pleased to say we have issued an unmodified opinion over the city's financial statements. It is the highest level of assurance that we as independent auditors can give, that the city's financial statements are materially correct and that all required disclosures under the generally accepted accounting principles in the United States have been made. In other words, it's a clean opinion, it's what you want to hear. If you'll flip back with me to page number 34. Page number 34 is our statement of net position, otherwise known as a balance sheet. This financial statement is presented on a full accrual basis of accounting, which means all of the long-term items of the city, such as capital assets, long-term debt, et cetera, are included on this financial statement. Here, I'll just point out that between your governmental and business-type activities for the end of fiscal year 2023, the city ended the year with total assets of about 247 million. On the next page, total liabilities of about 156 million and overall ending net position of about $94 million. If we go back to page number 38, you'll see that same type of financial statement, a balance sheet. However, this is presented on a modified accrual basis of accounting, so those long-term items are no longer included here. This is much more akin to the basis of accounting on which you would adopt your budget. Here, I'll just point out that for fiscal year 2023, the city's main operating fund, the general fund, ended the year with total assets of about $11 million, total liabilities of about $894,000, and an overall ending fund balance of about 9.1 million. And then if we scroll, excuse me, if we flip back to page number 42, we'll see our statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance. This is otherwise known as an income statement. Again, on that modified accrual basis of accounting, this will look very similar to your budget. Here, I'll just point out that, again, that main operating fund, the general fund, ended the year with total revenues of about 19.8 million, total expenditures of about 17.8 million, and after some other financing sources and uses, the general fund experienced a net increase in fund balance of about $977,000, leaving you with that ending fund balance of about 9.1 million. In general, we look, bonds rating agencies, et cetera, look at that ending fund balance number and usually like to see about three to six months' worth of operating expenditures included in that ending fund balance, sort of a marker of financial health, if you will. I am pleased to say that that $9.1 million represents just over 50% of your total yearly operating expenditures, or a little bit more than six months, so very, very healthy fund balance in your general fund. With that, I'll conclude my presentation, take any questions you all might have.
Council, any questions based upon this really, really good report? And thank you, Ms. McElwain, for leading this process. I see no questions indicated. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Thank you all.
We'll move on to work sessions and briefings, 5A petition update for the recall of Mayor Lyle Nelson.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Irma Parker, City Secretary. I wanted to inform you that the petition supplemented was received by the city on the date that it was required to be received, and staff is currently going through the process of reviewing the document and hope to have something out by Friday. We've already gotten several open records requests for the document, so as we're going through the process, we're doing the redaction and everything that we need to do on the document so it'll be ready to go. So, we hope to have something for you by Friday if everything goes well. Thank you.
Any questions?
Any questions for the interim city secretary? And the open records requests are going to be handled, so we're full of compliance. Thank you, thank you. Councilmember Fosler.
Yes, what's the mode of communication you will use on Friday? I'm sure there are so many curious people in town.
I will send something to the petitioner and y'all will get something emailed.
The council will?
Yes, ma'am.
And then anything on social media?
No, we'll plan something for the next meeting.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Anything else?
That appears to be it. Thank you, ma'am. We will now move on to item 6, staff and board reports, our city managers' report.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This is a pretty brief and benign report. I do want to make the council aware of a water outage for tomorrow in the areas affecting Magnolia, Linden, Oak, Laurel, Juniper, and Semin between Carter and Wilson Street. It's set to begin at 7:00 a.m. with an expected outage time of five to six hours. If residents have any questions, they can please call City Hall or if there's any issues that are experienced and we have somebody who needs water, we will have the fire department or another city department take water over, drinking water, not full gallons of water. Just make that clear. The city manager, assistant city manager, and assistant to the city manager will be traveling to Pittsburgh September 21st through the 24th for the International City County Managers Association Conference. It'll be the first time the assistant city manager and assistant to have ever been to a city manager's conference, so they will be able to attend sessions with 8,000 city managers from across the world. The City of Bastrop is hosting the Texas Municipal League Region Meeting on December 12th at the Bastrop Opera House. We have sent out letters to local businesses soliciting gifts to make our, what we're going to call our holiday spectacular, that much more special, and to highlight our businesses in Bastrop. That's what I have.
Any questions for our city manager, Mayor Protim Kirkland?
The water outage or the repairs that are being done there, can you explain to us? You've given us the location, but we don't know why it's being taken down.
I do not have my public works person, but some of it is an advance of street repair and some of it is repairs that need to be made to leaking pipes and other.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Meyer.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank you, Sylvia, and the staff, because last year's TML that was at the Opera House, I know how you're going to top that because it was amazing, but I have faith in y'all and you did such a great job, so thank you for representing us so well.
Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Mayor. So, Mayor Protim took my water, why question? I did have a resident reach out to me this week wanting to know the street maintenance schedule, and it used to be on the website, but I looked for a good 30 minutes and I couldn't find it. But there used to be a link under Public Works, I think, letting the public know which streets were going to be repaired and when. So, if that's something you can add back or tell me where it is, because we couldn't find it.
Will do. I believe we have an HA5 item on the agenda tonight, on the 17th. 17th. So, in your packet this week, you'll get a whole new update for fiscal year 25 and we'll post that on the website. I don't know what's gone or isn't, so.
Yeah, it used to be a list of the streets that were going to be updated or redone or whatever, list them all in order, and then it had which street and about when.
Okay.
I sent them the last workshop that we had, there was a little bit of the HA5 stuff, but it wasn't, that one, the one that used to be online was very detailed until you went, when your street was coming up next.
Okay.
Is that it, Councilmember Lee?
Yes, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. We will move on to citizen comments. Madam City Secretary, do we have any citizens signed up to speak?
No, Mayor.
Wow, let's soak that in a little bit, council. Thank you, thank you so much. We'll move on to consent agendas. Anybody here at the dice wishes to remove an item off the consent agenda? Councilmember Fosler.
Please remove 8B.
8.
B.
B, Bravo? Anyone else? Anybody in the audience wish to have an item removed from the consent agenda for individual consideration? Seeing none, Madam Assistant City Secretary, will you please read the consent agenda exclusive of item 8B?
The consent agenda reads as follows. Item 8A, consider an act to approve the following Bastrop City Council meeting minutes, 1, Tuesday, August 27, 2024, regular meeting, and 2, Wednesday, September 4, 2024, special budget workshop. Item 8C, consider an act on the second reading of ordinance number 2024-27 approving the official municipal boundary and extraterritorial jurisdiction map of the city, directing this ordinance and map be filed, recorded, and made available as provided by law, providing for severability, repeal, and effective date. This concludes consent agenda.
Council, assistant city secretary has laid out the consent agenda. Do I have a motion? I have a motion from Councilmember Lee. I have a second from Councilmember Plunkett. Madam Assistant City Secretary, if you will call the roll.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Fosler?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Kirkland?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Consent agenda passes unanimously. We'll move immediately to item 8B, consider an act on the second reading of ordinance number 2024-24, abandoning and vacating a certain section of Madison Street right away and the Houston Street right away to the north of State Highway 71, south of Government Street, and authorizing the city manager to execute any necessary documents to convey the city's remaining real property interests, if any, and said right away to adjacent owners. Councilmember Fosler, do you need the city manager to lay this item out?
No, I just had a note of clarification on my page 31 of the amended packet, the Madison, Madison Street wasn't highlighted, but the online, it may be highlighted as well. On the survey, that page 31, can someone check? I just want to make sure it's clear which sites we're looking at.
Let me bring up the, in your packet, Madison Street was not highlighted.
In mine, it's not, but I'm looking at John's and his is, so.
Let me bring up what's in the packet right now. Let me copy it so that Colin can bring it up.
All the words are correct, but I just want to make sure we get that little highlight so people know where it is.
My little clock is running.
I can make a motion without even verifying.
No, 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 no. I don't want you to do that.
It's there.
Almost there.
We've waited on hold this long, we can wait on hold. Do we need some background music to?
Yes.
Not for me.
Staying. Well, in an effort to save money, we went to an Adobe license. There you go. So, that is the, this is Madison Street?
Okay. The version I have is not highlighted for some strange reason. That's great, thank you. Move to approve.
I have a motion from Councilmember Fosler.
Second.
I have a second, Mayor Protim Kirkland. Seeing no further discussion indicated, Madam Assistant City Secretary, if you will call the roll.
Councilmember Fosler?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Thank you, council. We'll move on to items for individual consideration at the request of our city manager. I am realigning the agenda so we can literally put the cart before the horse. We'll be taking up 9B, conduct a public hearing for the fiscal year 2024, 2025 budget, consider an act on the first reading of ordinance number 2024-29, adopting a budget for fiscal year 2024, 2025, October 1, 2024 through September 30, 2025, attached as Exhibit A, making certain appropriations, providing the expenditures for said fiscal year in accordance with said budget, updating the master fee schedule, providing the distribution severability repealer and effective date, proper notice and meeting, and more to include on the September 17, 2024 agenda for our second reading. Ms. McElwain.
I'm just going to camp out here for a minute.
Please.
Speaking of... Yes. Okay, so I am here to present you with, do you have to open a public hearing?
You'll lay out the item, we'll ask you a bunch of questions and we'll open the public hearing.
Perfect, okay, great. So, of course, these are pages that we spoke about at our last budget workshop. They, I incorporated all of these into the budget. The one-time in excess of fund balance for Parks and Border Crest is not included in that, but that is something that we can make the adjustment for as we, as those things come up. We know that those are earmarked for it, but I did not include that in the budget, but we can make a budget adjustment during the year. Our total budget of revenues across all funds is $73,567,688, which is a decrease of 1.2% from the prior year. This is due to one-time revenues in fiscal year 2024 and conservative estimates for fiscal year 2025. The proposed property tax rate that is included in this budget, this proposed budget remains the same at .4994, which is less than the no new revenue rate. Our sales tax increase is 3.5% more than fiscal year 24 budget. The minimal, there are minimal increases in all of the other categories in general fund. There were some decreases, some minimal increases, but... But then water rates will increase by the percentages as provided in the study through 2025. And that will be, that's on the agenda in a couple of items, so. Our budgeted expenditures across all funds are $95,639,158, which is a 21.3% decrease from prior year. This is due to previous bond issuances being spent in 2024. This budget includes a 3.3% COLA, 2.5% step increase, one time expenses of $620,000 for vehicles and equipment. Two new police officers, one new recreation assistant, two new water wastewater positions. And all items that were included on that first slide have been incorporated into your numbers in the, in your budget book. Section 6.05 of the city charter states that after a public hearing, the council shall analyze the budget, making any additions or deletions considered appropriate and shall at least three days prior to the beginning of the fiscal year adopt the budget by a favorable vote. And since the charter requires two readings for an ordinance to be effective, the second reading of this ordinance adopting the budget for fiscal year 24 to 25 will be on September 17, 2024 at the regular scheduled council meeting. Any questions?
Any questions for CFO, Councilmember Fossler?
Could we go back to the first slide real quick? I may not see it, but I know it's on here somewhere that we reduce the retirement age from 25 to 20.
Oh, we did. We did. That wasn't it. Well, I guess maybe y'all approved it at the last one, but it has been incorporated into the budget the whole time.
I just kind of wanted to brag about that, so now we're up in standard with certain cities.
Mayor and council, just for reference, I have a document that I'd like Colin to bring up. It is, and I just got it. It's our Texas City Manager Region Seven survey, which includes everything from Rockdale to Austin, Hillsborough, Harker Heights. I want you guys to see where other cities in our area are in terms of, go to the response data table. It's a lot easier to read. They compare the FY '24 tax rate, our proposed FY '25 tax rate, any employee compensation changes. So our Texas City Managers, we go through some periodic comparisons of each other. Keep going down, Colin. It is on page five. There you go. Just may have to zoom in. So we have a city such as Austin, for example, who had an FY '24 tax rate of .4458 and their proposed tax rate is .4776. And the voter approval rate required is .4776. So they're going right up to, right up to the max. And then you have cities like Cameron who are at .6594. Their proposed tax rate stays the same and their voter approval rate is just a tad under that, which is still right up there. And then you have cities like Dripping Springs who are the same all across the board. And then you have cities who some, fall somewhere in between. Lakeway, for example, .1440. The proposed budget is .1625 and the voter approved rate is .1626. So we fall very much in line on the lower end of not passing any tax rate increases to our residents. And then if you look at employee compensation, it's quite a mix. Jonestown, for example, has an average of 9%. It's a much smaller city. It's a comparison among all of the staffs. Nolanville, 7%, Robinson, 4%, Cameron, 5%, Austin, 4%. Bruceville, Eddie, 3.2%, and Bryan, City Bryan, 4%. So the cities match with the 3.3 with the Consumer Price Index is on pace with pretty much what the other cities are offering. And I will share this with the council. It's got a bunch of good comparison among all of our cities in our region. And it's a good litmus test of where are we in terms of employee compensation, for example, and what the comparables are.
Thank you. Councilmember Meyer, you have a question?
Yes, I just wanted our citizens to know in the budget, because it's not listed here, but we are funding two more parades to go down Main Street. And I know this is what you've been waiting for. All these numbers are great and I love it, but I want to tell you that the homecoming parade will go all the way down Main Street next year and the Juneteenth Parade will also, as well as the Christmas, but it was already funded. So we did add those two parades for the budget to be funded. And I also want to, for everyone to understand and what our city manager just said on the .4994, that is the no new revenue. We are very.
It's less than the new revenue.
Very, very, 4994, .4994. It's, that's what, yeah. It's no, it's less than the no new revenue, correct. But my point on that is we know that everyone is strapped and our citizens are for money. So we absolutely are insistent of not putting the burden on you. And Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland cracks a whip at us if we even suggest anything on that because he is adamant about that tax rate. So I just wanted you to understand that we understand you and we are, your concern is our concern. My question is on the community partners, how, how did we figure out we're going to do the convention center?
There was no conclusion.
Yeah, no. At our last meeting, we said we were going to do a lottery and we were going to have four spots for the lottery. Four spots is what we funded at, in the last budget cycle and we funded those at $4,000. This year, there was a request of more than eight to use the convention center. So we will be reaching out to all of our community partners that they did receive the required or the requested financial funding. But the convention center use will be on a lottery system.
Great. And when we set that up Sylvia, will it be probably parameters of whoever got it the previous year might be taken out for the next year? Just to make it fair where everyone has opportunities or?
So my plan had been everybody who asked for it be included in the pot and we do the lottery. So yes, it may very well end up that if you had it, you may not receive it. That's the fairest way.
Perfect.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Mayor. So I do have a question about the rate. So in our second workshop, I think, the first that we did back there, you stated to council that you really needed us to consider the .0525 or whatever that number was because you were afraid we might not meet financial obligations. So why has that changed?
Not for, no, it had to do with keeping up with, not having to next year come in and raise the tax rate as.
More than what we would. And are you still afraid of that being the case?
It's not that big of a number. I was just, it just, it's $50,000.
And did we have to cut from anywhere else to keep it at the .4, 449, whatever it is?
No, but we will be getting close to, the difference is that we've increased salaries. Our salaries is the biggest portion of our expenditures, which are year after year recurring expenses. And so it cuts back on the one time things that you can do.
Okay. Because I'm, I have a question about that too in a bit. So my other question is about the community partners. So on the form that we've been looking at all these weeks, it says the total was 158. And that total included those in kind. So we're, what is our new total? Because at the, at the, on the very bottom line, it had everything totaled up plus the in kind and the total was 158 for community support funding. So if we're now only going to do four, does that change that 158 amount?
The in kind amount was not in as a dollar amount. That column just had words. So it was, that was just the ask that was in the 158 column.
At the bottom of that column though, I remember seeing a 6, 6,800 number. What was that number? And I think I brought my book. I thought that at first, but then when I looked at the bottom of the column, I recall seeing a number of 6,800.
There, I see what you're, I see what you see.
Yeah.
It is not added into that number. It's a, it's a separate column and it's not added.
Got it. So that was that ask. I wanted to talk to the city manager about the OpenGov. So I, I kind of looked at the OpenGov versus the ClearGov and what cities were using ClearGov and they're, they pretty much do the same thing. So my question is for the $75,000 that we would be spending, it's my understanding we spent $25,000 for the ClearGov software, I believe, and we pay something annually on that. What are those numbers? Am I right on that?
I'm not sure what our annual, our annual expense is for ClearGov.
I think, I think they're about $45,000, I think.
For ClearGov?
For ClearGov.
That was the, to purchase it?
That's the annual.
$45,000 annually? And it's with OpenGov, what's the annual? Or is there an annual?
I can't remember. We had the, we had the, I would have to go back and look at my email to see. I think the total, I don't know what the annual is, but the total was about $75,000. And there is one time expense setup fee with that. And I, the price was about, I'm going to say it's going to be about $55,000 annually. It's more.
So my, that goes back to my question. If they both do the same thing, and the cities that I've talked to actually love ClearGov, are we just not using Clear, ClearGov efficiently? Why pay the extra money? I made a joke to somebody and I said, it's like have upgrading from a Steve Madden to a Chanel and they both carry the same thing. So if they both have the same services, why are we wanting to pay more money for a service that we already have and just not do better training for it?
So the OpenGov, for me, it's a matter of transparency. So the OpenGov requires a lot of manual manipulation. And with OpenGov, it is reading directly from the financial system. So I can't go tell you, oh, we only spent X amount of dollars, which, you know, was our conversation last week on, no, ClearGov says this, but this. You would have been able to drill down to engineering expenses. You would have been able to click it and you would have been able to find that check quickly without anybody else going and manually manipulating. So it is a quote unquote time saver for staff because there's no need for double and triple entry. But it really is more for the outside world to be able to see everything that we're spending our money on. If you want to drill down and do just a report on attorney's fees or just a report on legal fees, it's a click of a button that's open to everybody. That's why it's called OpenGovernment.
And ClearGov was, we have to manually.
We have to manually manipulate. We have to, well, it does read some, but we have to go in and make adjustments. And some of that is our own accounting. We've got to clean stuff up on how we were coding things. But OpenGov really is probably the easiest and most transparent to the point that you can scan in the checks. You can actually go see the check that was written for that amount of money.
Okay, on the police cars, the $300,000 was for, that was the budget amount for the eight cars, not the 10 cars?
Correct.
Right?
Eight cars.
Just wanted to be sure on that. And then.
It's actually more than that, but that's just the amount that we're transferring over. They had money, they had money in their verve to cover the difference, but.
Okay. And then my last question is regarding personnel. So the city manager's budget was over, I want to, if I'm recalling correctly, 200,000, I think, for this past fiscal year. What was the, is that about right what you told us?
2024?
2023, 2024. You said it was over by about 200,000 in a previous, some of our previous meetings. It was over budget and you said that it had to do with severances. Remember that conversation? So if council, we're, we're going to finalize our budget, right? And we're finalizing our budget for the employees that we have. We didn't get the five year plan. That still hasn't been done, right?
The HR five year plan?
Well, you were going to give us a five year plan. You said that you guys were working on that.
HR has received the study. I'll get an ETA on the date.
Okay. So my question is because we went over budget, there were titles, new titles, you know, put in place, raises given. None of that was budgeted in the initial fiscal year 23, 24 budget. So how does that work? If we're approving the budget now, is there some money in the fund that allows for more hiring? Because it seemed like last year, people were just getting hired and getting a salary and none of that was coming before council. So I'm trying to understand what the process is for that. If we're approving this budget saying, these are the employees that we have, staff is not saying we're going to hire three more police officers in the next budget year. How is it that then we can just add titles and increase salaries if it wasn't already improved in the budget?
Well, one, those are operations and those fall under my purview. You guys have handle over the employees that report to you and that would be me and the city attorney. That's number one. Number two, the item wasn't over because of a quote unquote severance package. Most of the items, when we lose a long term tenured employee, we have an unfunded liability called drag up pay. The city employees are able to take all of their unused vacation at the hour that they earned it or at the most recent pay that they earned it. So for example, if we have an employee who started at $15 an hour, but when they retire here after 25 years or did their 10 or 15 years and they're making $45 an hour, they're going to get paid at that $45 an hour. They're going to get paid at that rate. So there's an unfunded liability called the drag up pay. And the city pays up to 240 hours. Somebody correct me. What's the correct number? 240 hours.
So that's like an insurance.
I'm sorry?
That's kind of like an insurance. There's an, you said, you're saying unfunded liability and we're paying up to $200,000.
No, 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 no. 240 hours.
240 hours.
So it's, it's equivalent for about six weeks of drag up pay of what we allow. Additionally, if an employee retires after a full 25 years of service, they're allowed 50% of their sick pay. So those numbers don't show up anywhere. One of the things I've been talking to staff about is buying on a one for one. One, I want you to take your vacation. I want you to use at least 40 hours of vacation and I want to pay you for 40 hours of vacation because those hours are worth less today than five years down the road when they retire. The city doesn't have a policy like that. So has there been some severance? Yes, but how the severance works is we keep them on payroll. And so there isn't like a one time big zap. The big zaps have happened from drag up pay. That's, that's where the big zaps have happened. So when we lose a 15 year employee, for example, and they have that many hours of vacation and or sick to take with them, 15 hours wouldn't apply. I mean, 15 years wouldn't apply for sick, but they, they could potentially take a 10 or 12 or $15,000 drag up pay in vacation with them.
How much drag up pay did we have to do in the last fiscal year? What was the total amount?
I don't have that answer in front of me, but I can put it in a memo to the council.
And then it still goes back to my question. If we're approving a budget for X amount of employees, for X amount of dollars for fiscal year 2024, 2025, or if we go back to last year, how was it that we, and council approved that budget for that amount of employees? Where's the money or where are you shifting money to add new titles or increase salaries because that wasn't approved in the budget?
It depends. It may be from the same, well, it has to be from the same fund. So it has to be from the same general fund. If there was something planned in the general fund that I didn't do, we held that. And, or we held the position open for a longer period of time in another area. So for example, engineering is partly in the general fund. The engineering position hadn't been filled, so there's some salary savings there. There are salary savings among the funds when we hold a position or we don't fill a position as long or whatever. So some of that is salary savings. The, the drag up pay is something I can't, I can't calculate because I don't know when people are going to leave. In terms of adding FTEs, I'll give you an example, the police department, for example. In terms of a reclassification, additional certification and education pay, we tried to make things equal. So she has agreed to hold positions open for two months, et cetera, to cover whatever needs. You just received the financial statement. The general fund was healthy. It had 977 extra dollars that fell to fund balance. And so while one fund might have been over, the overall fund itself was still healthy.
I still would like to know where the money comes from. I feel like if we're going to increase salaries, we're going to add. And I know throughout the year, we get updates from our CFO when people are going to be added or when there's, I, I recall those conversations happening. But I, I, my question though is, and my concern is if we're saying we don't have enough money to add two police officers now or more cars or what have you, and then during the year, we get a brand new title that. we get a brand-new title that didn't exist before, but we couldn't hire a new police officer, that's where my concern is. And I understand staff is your staff, but if that money wasn't included in the budget, at some point, I would think it would come to council.
And I'll get the, the example of the police officer, for example. She has by nature savings because it takes a while to get somebody out of the academy. We fund some cadets. It takes a while for them to get out of the academy. So she inherently has some salary savings worked in. She may use it for some other need that she has, or if a really good officer comes in, she may not hire that cadet. She may hire this really good officer who just happened to fall in her lap. Not that that has happened lately, but somebody that just may fall in her lap. And that's the same thing for the funds across the board. If a director comes to me and wants to do a reclassification, we look at internal equity, first of all, what's everybody else making? And then secondly, the director has to defend where, where the money's going to come from. Are they going to hold a different position vacant? Are they combining positions? You know, what is it that they're doing? Overall, the goal is that the bottom line balances. And so we have many departments in the general fund that if there's healthy fund or there's additional funds, it may be used to offset something else in the general fund. The only monies we can't mix are like water wastewater, the restricted funds, water wastewater, the hotel occupancy. We can't mix those funds. But if there's something within the general fund that needs support, for example, there may be a transfer to the library, there may be a transfer to police, there may be a transfer to fire, et cetera, et cetera.
I'm not really talking about transfers. I'm, I'm talking about creating brand-new titles that weren't discussed in the budget. I'm not talking about transfers. I'm not talking about use of reserves, creating brand-new titles that we didn't approve in the budget for those titles. I would think that if there's a five-year plan, that we would have, we would have had that as part of our budget discussion so that we would be able to know over five years, this is what we're looking at. And I feel like we've had that in previous budget discussions.
Your five-year plan is, the five-year plan that we are looking at is a compensation plan. It is not a title, city employee title. You would take away all flexibility for a city manager to be able to do operations if every title change or every addition or deletion to staff.
I'm not talking about every title change. I'm talking about brand-new, creating brand-new titles with brand-new salaries that were not part of the budget.
So when there's one created, there's usually one taken out or there's an adjustment to revenue. If you go back and look at your budget amendments in prior years, Ms. Waldron brought you quarterly budget amendments. I told you I wasn't doing that this year. We were going to do it there toward the end. There are some positions that she brought to you that had additional sales tax revenue or additional hot revenue or whatever the revenue source was, and there was some reclassifications added. If you go back to your 23 budget amendments, you'll see that happening. So we try to do it on a one-for-one, whether it's additional revenue that was received for whatever reason, we had a, you know, a surplus in X, then it was used to sweep that way.
So I, I, I want, I would like to know what the drag-up is, was for the employees that receive that amount. That's all I have, ma'am.
Thank you, Councilmember Meyer.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank you, Edie, because I know that you have been living and breathing this budget for a long time, so. And this, you haven't been with us that long and I'm so happy you're with us. So I want to thank you. And city manager, I want to thank you for managing our budget and all the hard work that you put into. And thank goodness, I don't have to do that kind of work. We have you to do it. And you've got 25 years of experience doing that, too. So I thank you for that.
Thank you. Edie, I'm going to tell you, it's not a, it is not an easy task by any means. It is, I call municipal budgeting and my friends in city manager world will hate me for this, but I call it Enron accounting because sometimes, it's fun to counting, just for everybody else, it's fun to counting, but it feels like sometimes we're counting things two and three times. It's the fund that receives it, counts it as revenue. We make a transfer out, the fund that receives it counts it as revenue, anything else, that counts it as revenue. So to the layperson, it looks like, wow, we've got 100 million dollar budget when it really isn't. It is blank because of all the transfers that happen in. Our general fund budget, super healthy, super healthy. Our bond rating just went up. Our water wastewater fund, not so much. That one is struggling and it's going to continue to struggle so long as impact fees aren't received. That bond rating was a minus one down from all of the debt that has been incurred and the development that hasn't come on board. And you'll see that in your impact fees. You saw a little bit of it at the workshop, but it is, it is a difficult balancing act to try to make sure we do not go bankrupt and we're being fiscal stewards. And sometimes that means shuffling staff or that means shuffling resources.
Thank you, appreciate it. Yeah, it, you know, the more open discussion we have relative to the budget, because that is, and fiduciary responsibility is absolutely a key factor here. So I appreciate the questions. I appreciate the answers especially. Is that it? I see no other questions indicated. I can now move to the public hearing unless you have something else you want to add. Okay. We are, we will conduct a public hearing. I'm declaring the public hearing on item 9B open. Madam Assistant City Secretary, do we have anybody that wishes to speak on this subject?
No, Mayor.
I will now close the public hearing and we will move to item 9A. Conduct a public hearing and consider an act on the first reading of ordinance. Now, council, we need to be very careful. It has to be specific language, and I know you're going to remind us of this later on, Ms. McElwain, relative to this motion. So consider an act on first reading ordinance number 2024-30, a tax roll adopting a tax rate and levying ad valorem taxes for the fiscal year 2024, 2025 to provide revenue for the payment of budgeted municipal expenditures and providing for tax assessment, record severability and effective date, proper notice and meeting, and move to include on the September 17, 2024 agenda for a second reading. Ms. McElwain.
Okay, so our first slide shows that our freeze-adjusted taxable value increased only slightly, and then we had 62 million of new revenue for a total taxable value of 1 billion 658,780, sorry, 1 billion 658,787,901. For the items that are under review, we use 83.5%. A lower value provided by the Bashrop Central Appraisal District. We did slightly increase this year, but not as high as we would have liked. And then this is the slide showing that our proposed rate that we had, we had decided at the last workshop would be the same as the previous year at .4994. Our no-new rate for the current year is .5025, and the voter approval rate was .5165. Our no-new revenue M&amp;O rate would have been, could, could go up to 30, would be 3061, and our proposed is at 3032 with our debt rate at .1962. Our M&amp;O rate used in fiscal '25 proposed budget is .3032, which is 52,800 less than the no-new revenue rate or about .67% lower. This budget will raise more revenue from property taxes than last year's budget by the amount of 432,609, which is a 5% increase from last year's total budgeted amount. The property tax revenue to be raised from the new property added to the tax roll is And the staff recommends to consider in action to adopt the ad valorem tax rate. Tax code requires that the motion be read as follows.
You don't need to read that.
Okay, thank you.
You don't need to read that. Any, 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 any questions for Ms. McElwain or for our city manager? Seeing none indicated, oh, Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland.
I always find this part interesting on the disappointing side. And more specifically, I, I think maybe in future years, I'd like to see this language before we get to today because how does it have us increasing the tax rate by 1.6% when we left it the same? Like, how does that work?
Because of its, because of our increase in appraised value, it, our increase in, here we go. Because we use the freeze-adjusted taxable value.
Right.
That doesn't include the new revenue. So it's just the old, I mean, the new value. It's just the old value.
Okay. So by leaving the tax rate fixed, the fact that the valuations went up is causing us to have to say we're raising taxes?
Correct.
Got it.
Any other questions, comments before we open up for a public hearing? Seeing none, I will call a public hearing for item 9A open. Madam Assistant City Secretary, do we have anybody wishes to speak on this item?
No, Mayor.
I will close the public hearing on this item and I will entertain a motion specific, in the specific language that is outlined in our packet.
I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of 0.4994 per 100 dollar valuation, which is effectively a 1.6% increase in the tax rate.
I have a motion by Councilmember Meyer.
Second.
I have a second by Councilmember Fossler. Any further discussion, council? This is a big step. Seeing none indicated, Madam Assistant City Secretary, if you will call the row.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Fossler?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Thank you, council. It's a big step. Once again, we're, we're, I think we're sitting in good stead.
Mayor, do we need to approve B?
Yes.
Mayor, there was no motion made on item B.
I am, I am, I am so sorry.
You were too quick. I tried to stop.
I, I know. Throw something, throw something next time. Let's go, let's go back to 9B. I will take a motion on 9B.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion from Councilmember Meyer.
Second.
I have a second, Councilmember Fossler. Any further discussion? My apologies, council. Seeing none indicated, Madam Assistant City Secretary, if you'll call the row.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Fossler?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Madam City Manager, in spite of our best efforts to put the cart before the horse, it looks like I put the.
That's okay.
The, or put the horse for the cart. We should, we will now move on. Thank you, council. Motion passes unanimously. We will move on to 9C. Consider an act on the first reading of ordinance number 2024-28, Bashrop Code of Ordinances, Appendix A, Fee Schedule, Article A 13.02, Water and Wastewater Rates and Charges, Section 813-02-002, Wastewater Service Charge, and 813-0, .02, .004, Water Service Charge, as attached in Exhibit A, Providing for Findings of Fact, Enact with Repealer Severability, Providing for an Effective Date, Codification, Proper Notice and Meeting, and move to include on the September 17, 2024 agenda for a second reading. Ms. McElwain.
Okay, so we have, we had a rate study done in 2022, 2019 and 2022. That was through 2025. And so the, by NewGen, so these rates are part of that plan. This is the last year. We actually are in the process of getting a new study done for the next fiscal year, but these were the rates that were provided by them and we've just increased as they were recommended. This is for, this first slide is the increase for residential and commercial for in-city And the next slide is water rates for outside of the city limits for both residential and commercial, and these are just the minimum charges.
Is that it?
That's all I got.
I appreciate that. Any questions for Ms. McElwain on, on this, on this agenda item? Seeing none indicated, I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
I have a motion from Councilmember Lee.
Second.
I have a second for Councilmember Fossler. Seeing no further discussion or questions indicated, Madam Assistant City Secretary, if you will call the row.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Fossler?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Motion passes unanimously. We'll move on to item 9D. Do you need a rest, Ms. McElwain? Are you all right?
Oh, I'm good.
Okay. Consider an act on the first reading of ordinance number 2024-31, authorizing the issuance of the City of Bashrop, Texas Accommodation Tax and Revenue Certificates of Obligation, Series 2023, levying the ad valorem tax and pledging certain surplus revenues in support of this certificate, approving an official statement, a paying agent registrar agreement and other agreements relating to the sale and issuance of the certificates, and ordaining other matters relating to the issuance of the certificates, repeating all ordinances and actions in conflict herewith and providing for an effective date. Ms. McElwain?
Well, we are finally issuing these bonds for all of those projects that we brought to you. I think it was back in May for, I guess, the request for reimbursement. So I have Dan Wegmiller and Bart Fowler here to provide a short presentation.
Great. Thank you, Edie, Mayor. Councilmembers, good to be here. So as you all directed us to move forward with sale of certificates of obligation to fund roughly 38 million in projects, using that CO allows you to use your tax rating, which, or yeah, your tax back bond rating of AA, which is the highest rating that you have outstanding. It also allows you to fund these with some of the anticipated growth in your system rather than putting even bigger rate increases in, in place ahead of the time to issue this debt. So using certificates of obligation is, is a way to basically self-insure and put this into the market and let the system grow also into the debt. With that process, we applied to Standard and Poor's for another bond rating. As the city manager mentioned, Fitch took a outside view of it, even though it wasn't applied to this specific issue. They are applying it to all issues and they upgraded you from AA minus to AA. Standard and Poor's has also affirmed your AA rating, which is two notches from the highest rating possible of natural AAA. So when you go to sell bonds in any market, you're recognized as some of the highest credit quality, as is many of the issuers in the, the central Texas area. With that, I'll just note, and I think it's important to realize, that rating is great feedback for you all, but that rating, the real purpose is for an investor in any part of this country looking to buy bonds. If they want to gauge your bonds against some other entity and you're AA and someone else's Triple B, it shows that there's credit strength there. So their comments in their report note that the rating, in their opinion, at Standard and Poor's reflects the growing economy with ongoing development. They also note the strong management with good financial management policies practices under their assessment methodology, highlighted by your monthly financial update to the council, including the budget to actual, along with your investment reports and then various informal planning tools. They also note historically strong operating performance with year-to-date fiscal results trending well coupled with the maintenance of very strong reserve levels. So that leads their assessment to the AA category. I will note that they're watching the, the waters, wastewater system and the impact of the new rates along with the growth in the system because as was mentioned, any growth, community growth, system, you know, balances that. So you still affirm AA and they're watching that as well. The good news is, so this morning, we received bids. The bids are submitted to us electronically through a bidding platform and we received those this morning. And as you can see, we received six bids with Jeffrey's LLC being the low bidder. Their bid came out to 3.927109%. The cover bid from FHN Financial was 3.945817%, so very tight bids between those top three. The par amount has been reduced slightly to 36.32 million, meaning you're selling less bonds, but you're going to fully fund because with interest rates as low as they are, they bid a pre. as low as they are, they bid a premium, which means they are going to fund up the difference. And that's how they structure the coupons and the, the bonds to yield differently. But the net effective interest rate to you is that three point nine two. If we were in a higher interest rate environment back in the early nineties when we were selling five and six percent rates, often we'd see a discount applied. So it's actually a positive because you're technically selling less, less bonds. So with that, I know that's a lot of information. I'll be glad to answer any questions on the rating, on the bids. And then Bart Fowler is here to answer any questions. But the bid information has been incorporated into the ordinance and that's the only substantive change was just reflecting this winning bid.
Counsel, to that point, you'll notice that we have had a corrected, updated ordinance on nine D at the, at the dice and it put all the figures in there relative to interest rates and payback amounts and, and all, all of that easy to understand stuff. Is there any questions? Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yeah, the receive times on these bids from the lowest to the highest is like fifty-five seconds. Does everyone just wait till the last second to submit? Or is it, can people see what the best bid is over time and then try to beat it? Like, how does that work?
Now, so that's a great question. It's, it's fairly similar to like an eBay auction.
Okay.
Where.
So Jeffrey sniped it the last moment.
They, what's really interesting is you look at these, sometimes it's last minute economic news that might be popping up. At other times, you'll see the first bidder come in. It could be the name. It could be a, a certain set of buyers that really are keenly interested in this paper. And so it's, it's kind of, there's no rhyme or reason to it, but nobody, including us, will see the results until eleven hits. And then we, we see them, we review them and make sure they check out and then give them the verbal pending your action.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Councilmember Fossler?
Have you all worked with all of those people, all those bidders before? Those all, I mean, I recognize some of the big names, but.
Yes, absolutely. All, Jeffries, and I'll say Jeffries, FHN, RW Baird, Edie, and city manager through their career will see from time to time, these are firms that are reaching out from time to time. Sometimes you do competitive sales. Sometimes we do negotiated where we need to pick one and, or two or three and go to the marketplace. And all these firms have a strong presence throughout the state of Texas, both competitively and negotiated. So FHN, I believe, is Tennessee, Jeffries, prices out of New York, RW Baird, Chicago or Minneapolis, and then Wells Fargo Charlotte. BOK is Bank of Oklahoma Financial, and then Raymond James out of Florida. So they are, I'd say the Solworts of who we see show up on a regular basis.
I, I would like to point out the comment that he made. Last minute economic news or last minute news period. So folks in New York, believe it or not, are paying attention to we do, what we do here, and especially what you do up on that bias. So those things matter. And when we're on a call with New York or we're negotiating a bond, sometimes I've got to explain what we're doing. So please help me make that an easy explanation.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? If not, I will entertain a motion on this item.
Move to approve.
I have a motion from Councilmember Plunkett.
Second.
I have a second with Councilmember Meyer. Seeing no further discussion indicated, Madam Assistant City Secretary, if you'll call the row.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Fossler?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Motion passes unanimously. Ms. McElwain, thank you for all your time. We'll miss you. We'll move on to nine E. Consider an Act on Resolution Number two zero two four dash one one A, approving an agreement between the Bash Drop Economic Development Corporation and Hunden Partners in an amount not to exceed sixty thousand dollars for a feasibility study for a sports complex in the Bash Drop business and industrial park. Madam City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Right now, I'll put on the hat of interim executive director. So the BEDC brought on Kat Caffrey of Navis Consulting to help assist in a sports complex feasibility study. We had received a prior study from the EDC and as you know, there was some discussion in the Parks and Rec master plan also. We felt it necessary to bring a professional who has worked in this space and in this field. She interviewed several firms. The firm that was selected was Hunden Partners, who again has experience. They've conducted over a hundred feasibility studies in the state and they specialize in sports tourism facilities. The Bash Drop EDC heard the presentation on August twenty-sixth and recommended to council to approve the contract with Hunden in an amount not to exceed sixty thousand dollars. The BEDC professional service account will fund this study as well as the price tag to Navis Consulting. Any questions?
Counsel, any questions for our senior manager or for the two members on, on council who sit on the EDC board, for clarity? Seeing none indicated.
Move to approve.
I'll entertain a motion. I have a second, I have a motion from Councilmember Plunkett. A second with Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland. Seeing no further comments or questions indicated, Madam Assistant City Secretary, if you'll call the row.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Fossler?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Motion passes unanimously. We'll move on to item nine F, which was tabled from eight twenty-seven twenty twenty-four. Consider an Act on First Reading of Ordinance Number two zero two four two three. That cannot be right. Ordinance two zero, yes, that can be right. I was thinking years. Approving the updated service plan, including provisions related to assessment for Hunter's Crossing Public Improvement District, approving the fiscal year twenty twenty-four assessment rolled by the district, containing other provisions related to Hunter's Crossing Public Improvement District, Hunter's Crossing Local Government Corporation, and providing for an effective date. Madam City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. So at, uh, do I need a request to untable? Need a request to untable this item?
Please, I'll entertain a motion to untable this matter. I have a motion from Councilmember Plunkett. I have a second, Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland. No questions? Madam City Secretary, if you'll call the row?
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Fossler?
Yes.
Item has been untabled. Madam City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. So at the last council meeting, we explained the difficulties with the Hunter's Crossing PID and the council sent me back and said, what happens if we don't approve the maintenance and operations plan? And as you recall, there are two things mixed into the MNO plan, and that is debt, for which we borrowed for the fence and some minimal improvements. And then there's some mowing and attorney's fees, et cetera, et cetera, included in that amount. The P three, P three folks are here who worked with us and presented you in your budget or in your packet. If we removed the MNO, what, what does that do? So really, in your packet, I've given you sort of three options. The council can do a couple of things. The council can say, well, it's too late. You need to approve it as submitted and we'll try to figure this out at some point in the next year. The council can say, well, we don't think that's right, but we're going to split the baby. We're going to let the MNO pay the debt and the attorney's fees to an amount of about eighty-five thousand dollars. And then the city will absorb the remainder via a, again, an additional transfer of one-time dollars. Or the city can say, we're going to absorb it all. The difficult part of the MNO is, as I stated, it, it, the property owners feel like it has no end in sight. And it is an annual service and assessment plan. And there are needs that are identified within the PID itself that some members of the board are made up of residents within the PID. And so there is some unmet needs where we draw the line with the HOA and the PID is still very blurry in my mind. And I know that we have a petition beginning to circulate to dissolve the PID itself. So we're going to have to get our arms around this issue no matter what. At this point, the city has an obligation to the debt itself. I had a conversation with our Parks and Recreation person whose folks, between her and Streets and Drainage, would be tasked with mowing and upkeep of the area. And both have assured me they would need additional staff and resources in order to be able to upkeep. And so there is, again, we can take a one-year approach. We will tackle it this year and try to solve it within the next twelve months, but we may very well, in the next twelve months, be in this same position. We also face the, we need to get bills out, so to speak. We have an opportunity to do a reading today and then your second reading next week on the seventeenth. And my suggestion to the council is perhaps we split the baby until we find some sort of resolution. Again, I'm telling you, it's not going to be a long-term resolution because we're going to be in this same space next year. But we do go out for bids in January on the mowing services. And so that may change that amount also, so.
Does that change the mowing services? That, that affects the frequency? That seems to be an issue with the PID fees that take care of the.
So the mowing company, the mowing fees are eighty-eight thousand dollars in here. And as our Parks and Rec Director, Ms. Moore can attest, we're having some difficulty, hence the desire to go out for bids again. I don't know that it's a matter of frequency, but I believe it's a matter of quality of the work being done by the existing provider. And Ms. Moore, if you, oh, she's gone.
I can't, I can't disagree with that assessment, so. Councilmember Lee?
Okay, so I have a lot of, I have some questions and if I get it all confused, because it is confusing, bear with me, but you answered a lot of it just now, so that's great. Here we go. So when you say split the baby, what is the total cost that we would be splitting? The two twenty-one?
The two twenty-one, yes.
So the city would pay the two twenty-one?
No, the city would pay fifty percent of the two twenty-one.
Fifty percent of the.
What is, what is, okay, so here's my, here's my thought process in terms of fairness to the other residents in the city. Hunter's Crossing folks also pay general property taxes. And those general property taxes take care of Parks and Recreation the way everybody else in the city does. What everybody else in the city didn't receive was a fence, so an asset. So I can defend, well, there's some mowing and things that need to happen, but I don't know how I defend the debt that the PID has taken on. So my suggestion would be the transfer to debt service, the attorneys, et cetera, et cetera. There are some things that are only specific to the PID. And so if we want to be fair, two twenty-one, fifty percent to the city and fifty percent to the PID. And again, I want to caution everybody, that is a one-year solution. It's not a, it's not a long-term solution.
Okay, thank you. So I have a question about, okay, says collected for MNO is two point two. That, that collection is, was over what period of time? The two point two that's been collected?
I'm going to have P three come and, and give you that response. So five point four, when it says that in your, in your document, five point four is the ceiling. And so when I said last, well, in the document that's in your paperwork, it says we can still collect up to three point one six six in a certain time period.
Okay, yeah.
We can collect. It doesn't mean we should collect or we must collect. The MNO is separate from the capital, so do you want to touch on that?
And John Snyder with P three works. That's been collected since two thousand and four, so twenty years.
But be, be clear, not from everybody. It says, is everything went vertical is when it started to get collected, which hit, which is part of our, part of our issues out there, is the various times that things went vertical?
Right. And now there was the, there was the, the big update in twenty nineteen where it was amended and restated and there was a settlement and, and so that's all been kind of restated and, and I think worked out. But so really, everything that we've been doing is based off of that twenty nineteen plan.
Totally agree.
And so there are some folks, to Councilmember Lee's point, there are some folks who think, oh, I'm done already. They're not.
So can you go back over the unpaid amount? Because I read it as five point four was for MNO and that's the PID bond amount?
No.
Okay. And then the total what was left is was the three point one?
Yes.
And you're saying, is the five point four a bond amount?
No. So a little bit of it is. So the capital is the amount that's actual infrastructure, hardscape, those things that are in the ground. That was borrowed money. The MNO is maintenance and operation of the PID itself. Don't, don't go anywhere. Is the maintenance and operation of the PID itself. And that may fluctuate. The attorney's fees may go up one year, may go down one year. We may have some special things we need to do in the PID and the PID should pay for those things related to the PID. Five point four is the ceiling that those properties can be assessed over that stated period of time. And I believe, is it twenty thirty or twenty forty?
For residents, it's twenty thirty-one, if I'm not mistaken.
Right. So, yeah, so for the, for the capital piece, it goes through twenty thirty, I believe.
And the MNO piece goes beyond that.
The, the MNO, it doesn't have the end date. It's really capped at the five point four million, which.
So therein lies the, therein lies the issue, Councilmember Lee, that ostensibly the service and operation, the PID board could continue until they reach that five point four cap. So that may be twenty thirty, twenty thirty-five, twenty thirty-seven, depending on how much they're assessing.
So the five point four was not a borrowed amount? That is what is estimated or projected that they will have to pay through?
To maintain over a period of time.
Okay, so one of the primary questions that I got was where did they come up with five point four? And in the packet, you said you're still trying to figure that out, right?
I, I don't know that there's a, a perfect answer, other than it was twenty years ago and the city council and the developer, when they were preparing those documents, that's, that's the number that they used, but I don't have the, the, the math behind the five point four. I can't tell you.
And that's what's not working for the residents. Because if they're paying this money projected to be us flying in our own cars in space before it's over with, they need, they should know what they're paying for. And I, I have, I agree with them. I have to agree with them. You're, who threw out a five point four number? What's the breakdown of the five point four number? One of the, one of the residents said, who has maintenance and operations worth five point four million dollars and not be able to tell us what it is and to just say, we don't know where that number came from, you just have to pay it? It's kind of not fair to them, which is why they want to get out of this deal. I, I think that, I, you know, the, in the packet, you said you're still working on figuring that out. And the people that have approached me have said that they do not want council to approve these assessments because we're approving an amount that they don't even know why they're paying it. And I would be saying, asking that same question.
If I, if I may, the, the five point four million was a projected amount from the developer back in two thousand and four. And it was a projected amount, the cost annually for the MNO fees to the residents in Hunter's Crossing is thirty-six dollars a year. The MNO is an extraordinarily small figure based upon the entire assessment is given. The majority of the assessment is for the capital assessment.
Well, the MNO component, that two twenty-one, has a pretty large assessment to the commercial.
To the commercial.
Yes.
To the commercial.
That's the difference.
Because they are paying more and, and they're not actually using a lot of what the money is going for, so why are they paying more? Why is it a larger assessment on the commercial?
That was through the negotiated settlement and, back in twenty nineteen to make sure the residents weren't overly burdened. And I, I will tell you, the PID that I did back in Corpus Christi, it was in even assessment period so that everybody bore their special assessment equally and it passed on with the property owners. This one had a, it's had some lawsuits, it's had some other dysfunction with the HOA. And at the twenty nineteen restated, that's, the amount was determined that the residents should pay less and the commercial should pay more.
I still, I still believe that we need to have Mr. Hyde come and do a presentation to answer, to answer the questions of how we arrived at the, at the reassessment back in twenty nineteen. And John, you came, you came on board and you came on board to fulfill the obligations that were set up in twenty nineteen, which was not in place before.
Correct.
We had no management before, which was completely out of compliance with state law. We brought us in compliance with state law. And so there's, there's a long process in play right here that I believe Mr. Hyde could probably answer. And, and I'm going to say, bring those questions to him. And I think we should have some hard questions to try to straighten this out. we should have some hard questions to try to straighten this out.
So, my question to the city attorney today was, if we table this today, because you still have a reading on the 17th, and we could have another 72-hour notice or something like that after that, would that give Mr. Hyde an opportunity to come and speak?
Thank you, City Manager. Mayor and Council, my response to that was, because the assessment does need to be adopted, it needs to be adopted by ordinance, and an ordinance takes two readings, I see no, no problem with go ahead and approving it on first reading tonight. That allows you to ask questions in the interim, and approving it on first reading tonight does not obligate you to any action on it for second reading, should the numbers change or your inclination changes.
So, I have two more questions. And, and help me with my math. So, this 221, 567 is the annual MNO?
For this, for this year only. So, every year, the board, well, they're required to meet at least once every five. Every year, the board, that's made up of the mayor, myself, and a couple of other folks, some residents within Hunter's Crossing. We meet, we determine how much it's going to take to mow, we determine how much it's going to take to maintain some of the areas that the Pid is supposed to be controlled in, and even some areas it, it doesn't, and what other debt or what other improvements need to happen. This has been the number, because the last big issuance of debt was the fence, and that was three years ago, two years ago, three years ago. So, I'm not anticipating it change significantly, but I could leave tomorrow, and you end up with an additional city manager who says, "We want to do great things in the Pid area," and the board agrees. Now, the council has final say, you guys can say, "Nope, we don't agree with that service and assessment plan, we think it should be X." But you may have a pretty aggressive board who says, "Man, I got a lot of room to that 5.4. Hady, bar the door, let's do it."
Why, why do we have to borrow money to pay the fence? If they've been paying MNO all this time, why did the city borrow money to pay? Don't know that either.
That was, that, that predates me.
Yeah, so, that one, I think I can actually help out with, is if, if you were charging the MNO, there was, there was two choices. You could borrow the money, so that you had a funding source to put the fence in kind of day one, or they could, they could build the fence in phases, or kind of collect for five years, and then build the fence in five years, once you actually have all the money, and the decision was made, "Let's get the fence built, let's, let's, let's borrow the money, pay it back over the, I think it was 10?
10 years.
10 years. And so, that was the, that's why the money was borrowed, is so that they could get the fence built and, and get it off the...
Is your question, "Hey, if you've been collecting it, why didn't you have a pot of money?"
They should have just had the money to pay for the fence.
Well, the $2.1 million over the past 20 years paid for, for the groundskeeping and other expenses relative to the upkeep of the, of the Hunter's Crossing common area. I mean, it's not money that's been sitting in an account. If it's been sitting in an account, yeah, that'd be, that'd be a good use for, but to my knowledge, it's, none of it's been sitting in an account anywhere. It's, it's spent annually, anyway.
That requires further discussion, but it doesn't make sense to me, that we've been collecting all these years, and there wasn't $500,000 in all of that collection, and we're collecting 221 roughly a year for how many years, and there wasn't $500,000?
Well, I think what the mayor's saying is, "We were paying as, we were earning as we go." So, perhaps we were only collecting just minimal amounts to cover operations. Again, it's a hot mess.
It was, it was, it was budgeted and, and, and expensed.
Yeah, so, each year, they would put together a budget similar to this and say, "Our budget this year is $100,000." They would spend very close to that $100,000. So, the, the goal was always try to have basically a zero balance at the end of, at the end of each year.
Like a church budget. Sounds like a church budget. So, then, my other question on that, so, if it's, let's say, it roughly averages 221, 567 for MNO. It takes, and my, if my math is funny, just let me know if I'm missing a piece, let me know. But I, if I take that amount over the next five years, which would be 2030, that would be 1.1 million collected for MNO. Over five years, 1.1. So, it's roughly then, to get to the three...
So, you could go beyond 2030. You could go as far as you need to to get to 5.4.
12 years would have me at the 2.2, and then, to your packet point, we don't even know if it's going to end at that.
That's my...
So, my math wasn't funny on that. So, if, so, on the MNO piece, again, nobody knows why they're paying that amount, what the cost is going...
Well, we know why they're paying now, we don't know where the original 5.4 came from, other than the developer saying, "Over the course of the Pid lifetime, this is what I estimate it's going to be."
So, can we reassess the MNO, or can the, the Pid and the HOA?
Well, that's what we do every year. That's what we do every year at the back table, and we take input from city staff on what we've done, how much is the mowing contract, et cetera, et cetera, what are the needs in the Pid? And again, the Pid is made up of some residents, current mayor included, and so, what...
No, 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 I mean, for the 5.4. So, however they projected, whatever calculation they used...
Could you reduce the 5.4 and cap it?
Yes. How did we, we don't know how we got to the 5.4.
You don't have to get to the 5.4, is, is the point, and I think that is also some of the reason for folks saying, "I want to dissolve the Pid altogether, because I want some end to this." Dissolving the Pid doesn't end debt. We still have to pay the debt, we still have to pay the outstanding obligations. But it does begin to tamp down on the, this whole annual, we have some extra needs, we're gonna, we're gonna pass that on. So, my suggestion is, we invite George Hyde for next Tuesday to come in. He had a conflict tonight, he's in Sibyllo tonight, but I don't know that he has a council meeting next Tuesday, but it really would benefit us to have his information on the lawsuits, how we got here, how we got to the 2019 numbers. And I know that doesn't assuage your, "I don't care about those numbers, how do we get to 5.4?" Trust me, we all have the same question.
But will his information help you determine if that was too excessive and us figure this out?
No.
How do we get to that point, is what I'm trying to get to?
We have to find it within our own general fund budget.
That's the only...
That's, that's...
There's no renegotiating the Pid, reassessing...
The residents in there are not going to sign anything else.
Yeah, that's that part.
The other, the other fact, please be put in there, is that we have to have the conversation with the HOA. The HOA is going to assume...
Or mayor.
I, I know, but the HOA is going to assume some of the responsibility, because some of the costs that's been incurred has to do with the pool, which is the, which is a responsibility maybe of the HOA, but yes, the, yet the encumbered party is the, the Pid, and by association, the city. So, there's this, these variation of questions that are out there, the what-ifs that are out there that we cannot define at this, at this point in time. I appreciate every one of those questions, and we've been asking those questions, I know I have, since 2019, when we tried to close it.
And really, yes, I'm sorry, Mayor, the, the issue becomes what feels like a bottomless pit.
Yeah.
And the accountability of what happened, how did we start, where did we get here? I have told this council, the Pid legislation now requires somebody like P3 to be a watchdog and an oversight. It requires that somebody do a review of the debt before it gets issued. It requires that we know what interest rate is going to be paid on the debt. None of that was common. The legislation, I thought, was decent, but we, we sort of veered and created our own little rules, and here we are, 20-plus years later, still trying to figure it out.
Yeah, and I, I so appreciate that you, because in five years that I've heard about this, I could never figure out. I would get so many different stories from so many different people, and you're, this is the first time I have, I think, a 90% understanding of where we are, so, thank you for that, I really appreciate it. Thank you.
I'll live it and don't have a 90% view. Councilmember Meyer.
Thank you. And that was my question, Mayor, also, is the HOA coming into play in this. It, it kind of seems like there should be a lot more involvement with that, and, and looking at all of this, as we said the last meeting, this is absolutely how you don't want to do a Pid. Without having any records or backup, and, and I feel for the people, and I really feel for the commercial too, because that is not fair, to have the burden more on, on the commercial. However, all we can do is do better. And I think the option, as Alan has said, if we have approval on the first reading, then we can, on the second reading, this is not final approval tonight, so I want people to understand that. I don't think to say, "It's too late, we've got to approve it," that's not an option, and I think to say, "The city absorbs everything," is not an option. So, the only option I see is to split it, which would be 110, 783.50. And that seems, for right now, the best option, but as Sylvie has stated, we've got, we've got to do better on this. This is, this is a disaster.
For the first, from 2004 to 2016, the Pid, as well as the HOA, were run by the developer.
Say that again, Mayor, because I want everybody to get a full handle on that.
From 2004 until 2016, the Pid Board, the local government corporation, as well as the HOA, were run by the developer. And the developer is the one that failed to pay the assessments on the individual lots, which, by the way, were not individual lots, it was a 283-acre obligation that each and ever one of the commercial multifamily and residents owed it separately and equally. And that was one of the things we did clean up, so we're not stuck with, you know, $11 million debt at, at 209 North Hunting Lodge Lane at my house, because I, I can't write that big a check, I guarantee you. But it's, you're absolutely correct, it is, it is a mess, it is a swamp. We tried to clean it up in 2019. Obviously, it, it was not a complete cleanup, and that's when George can answer those questions. I'm Stephen. Councilmember Plunkett.
Yeah, I just want to make sure, because we're going to get past this in a couple weeks, and it's going to go away again in our, in our minds, so, what do we need to do to make, you know, who do we need to get together? Who do, do we need a committee? Do we need a blue-ribbon panel? Remember, they used to do those all the time. What do we need, who do we need to get in the room to agree to a, a path to an end to this?
So, I believe it should be requested in your monthly financials, what's happening with the Hunter's Crossing Pid, so we'll start there, from at least a communication and transparency standpoint. But I believe there's already a petition circulating to dissolve the Pid. So, we're going to be faced with that document imminently, if not, you know, before the end of the year.
And if the Pid is, is dissolved, there's still that outstanding debt that somebody is going to have to be responsible for.
Correct.
And that's, that's, that's the question right there.
Correct.
You have, you have other comments? Councilmember Plunkett?
No, sorry.
All right, this item has been laid out, and we're all somewhat less confused.
Perplexed.
But...
Motion to table. I thought you said table.
No, the city attorney has a different version.
Oh, okay.
You can amend it on second reading.
I will do a motion to approve.
I have a motion from Councilmember Lee. I have a second from Mayor Protem Kirkland. No further discussion is indicated. Madam Assistant City Secretary, Phil Caldero.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Fossler?
Yes.
Thank you, Council, I know this is a very difficult unanimous vote.
We will bring back additional information for our 17th meeting.
Moving on to item 9G, considering actual resolution number R-2024-109, emergency procurement from Forsyth Brothers Infrastructure, and the amount not to exceed $235,973 for materials and labor to repair damaged storm drain facilities and appurtenances at Church Street and Buttonwood, storm drain, outfall, erosion at Pecan Park, and to repair 60 feet of damaged storm drain pipe at Sterling Drive, as shown in Exhibit A2 to Attachment A, authorizing the execution of all necessary documents, my own request, provided for findings of fact, repeaters of ability, effective date, proper notice and meeting.
This is a different Mr. Rosales, is it not?
He's quite, quite a bit different. I noticed he's sitting writing that down now that he saw it.
And let him swallow his dinner right quick.
Mr. Rosales, the podium is yours, sir.
Sorry, ma'am.
I'll, I'll click through for you.
My apologies. Yes, we're going to talk about the drainage, emergency drainage. We're going to start with Pecan Park first. We're doing 120 feet, it said 60 in the council packet, but it's actually 120 feet of storm drain pipe alongside Drive. This pipe was damaged by fire, you can see the pictures here, where the pipe has melted.
We had folks encamped and started a fire to stay warm.
Homeless camp, criminal mischief, we were unable to find anybody, so this is just, it's not covered by insurance, and so, this is, have to be replaced. It's 120 feet, and I think it's right up against the residential, if I'm not mistaken. Location number two?
And what, what is the cost of this 120 feet? So, council understands.
Oh, sorry. This project is, I have them divided out into the different projects.
It may change a little bit, because we're going to kind of open it up and see just how bad it is, and replace it better.
Yes, and so, it may go less or it may go more, depends on how far. They sent a camera through there, but they may have to find, they may find more when they open it up.
How, how deep is this pipe? Like, it was...
It's a 60-inch round pipe, and it's...
Five, five feet?
Yes, and it's, it starts...
So, someone went inside of it and started a fire?
Yeah, they had a camp in there, and a big campfire.
I was thinking, they lit it on the ground, undergrounded.
No, 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 no.
No, they were living, living in, inside this pipe.
So, and just, what this highlighted for us is our drainage rules and regs allowed this to be a PVC, CPVC pipe, instead, or a HDP pipe, instead of HDP, instead of a cementitious pipe, which would have burned. And so, you know, when we get folks complaining about the cost of development, and so, okay, well, storm drain only cost me this, if you allow me to use this kind of material, this is what happens.
Yeah, we can break, the, the last proposal we had has just the lump sum, and that was because we had to put all three projects together to make sure the bond was covered. That's the reason for the amendment after the initial posting of the agenda. But the contractor is here, so if we have any questions, we can ask him specifically, but, location number two?
You don't have the breakdown of the costs? I thought you were going to give us the breakdown of the costs.
I can get, I'll pull it in for each individual project. I'll pull them in. Vivian, can you pull that? Or you have individual?
Roll, roll, sure.
Sure, go ahead.
Good evening, Council, thank you for letting me be here. I'm Bill Forsyth with Forsyth Brothers Infrastructure, we're just up the road from you guys in Maynor. The, the question was regarding the, the total cost of the project. I think we had it listed at about $230,000, split between three locations. The location that's up on the screen right now, I believe, was about $130,000 amongst friends, you know, rounded numbers. The other two locations comprised about $50,000 per location.
Thanks, sir.
Location number two is going to be Pecan Park's storm water outfall. It has erosion around the outfall, which discharges into the Calderola River. We're going to repair that and make repairs before it continues to degrade more.
So, I'm going to stop you on Pecan Park, because everybody's ears perked up when you said Pecan Park. This is a portion of the outfall. This is the public improvement portion of the...
Go to the next slide.
Yes, this is the public improvement portion. This is not, the erosion that's happening within the HOA's portion is separate and apart from what we're doing here. This needs to be repaired, water's not staying where it was supposed to be staying, and it's actually going in a much different location. We are working with the HOA to hopefully get resolution to all of the erosion issues that are happening here. We had no warranty period left, but the HOA did, and the HOA has called the warranty period before the warranty expired, so they're working through with engineers, and we have offered to assist as partners in whatever is necessary.
Yes, so, the, the limits of this construction will be just within those yellow boundaries there. And location number three is the storm drain facilities in a...
Church and Buttonwood.
Yeah, I was trying to pronounce that word, but I'll skip it.
Appurtenances, appurtenances.
A church in Buttonwood, need to be replaced, and an inlet needs to be added to the intersection so that we can properly flow water, it kind of ponds there. It's been a, a issue for many, and as we've had many rains this, this season, it's just, we've seen it get worse and worse, so we're going to try to fix that.
Soon as water gets under that pavement, that pavement begins to deteriorate quickly. So, no matter what, what street repairs we do, if we don't address that, it's just going to keep happening.
Agreed, agreed. Councilmember Lee?
Thank you. In the description, it says 60 feet of storm drain, damaged storm drain pipes on Sterling Drive, but then the packet, it says Schaefer. I saw Schaefer somewhere.
Yeah, they use the name Schaefer, but it's, so if you go to Google Maps, it says Schaefer, but it's actually Sterling.
Okay, so it is Sterling.
Sterling, yes.
Yeah, because one of them I couldn't even pull up. I tried to like do a maps on it.
Yeah, Sterling Drive is the actual street name.
Got that. And then, has the design been done for this?
Yes. The location number one and number, number two have a design from MWM Design. We've shared that with the, with the, I believe that's what y'all are working off of, and how we got to the numbers.
And we, based on our conversation last week, don't have a city engineer. So who is, who?
We have an inspector that would inspect. We have a, the Robert Dial contract that you approved last would be one of the inspectors. This is a low dollar amount that the city manager can prove, so you won't see this, Robert Dial's contract come forward.
And we don't need, because, because we're talking about drainage and pipes and concrete and all this stuff, does someone, we don't need a city engineer to review this to make sure that it doesn't fail five years from now?
Well, we'll have a closeout phase, and we'll have a, this city engineer and the engineer that did the, which is MWM, which was our city engineer, Tony B., or Tony Bonobodo. He will do a concurrence letter after the project's done and completed.
What's the call?
Concurrence letter.
Councilmember Lee, just to give you a warm and fuzzy, if we get into the project and there are things beyond what is a normal repair, we do have the IDIQ contracts in place already. So the Assistant City Manager could call upon any number of engineering firms.
Yes, to double check his work, and then I saw...
Yeah, that's, that was the thing. I'm like, who's going to make sure this doesn't fail?
The third-party inspector will do the inspections, and then he'll provide a, a letter to the, to the engineer, and then the engineer will provide a concurrence letter. And then we also have, part of the reason for the amendment to the agenda was we made them provide a, a bond, and we could pull that bond if necessary.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yeah, we, you know, along the banks of the Colorado, we have this kind of situation all over town. And, and it seems like a very similar issue with every one of them. So is, are we doing it better now? I mean, just, I'd like to feel better about, you know, because behind my house, there's a, you know, it just, you know, drops right off.
Yes. So now the rules on how far you can be within critical water zone areas are greater. So that was the first step, and that was, that predates me. So that's a good first for the prior administration. The second piece is, we now have a CFM person on staff. So I don't have to go outsource it. I don't have to wait for somebody else, and I certainly don't have to wait for the developer to give me a wink, wink, and a handshake and tell me that it's good. So those two things right there are probably 75% of the battle. The rest of it is just making sure that we're working with our, also our county partners, because they do, they're also a FEMA asset for us, a floodplain management asset for us.
Okay, but do we, I mean, you know, these hills are steep and long, basically, and when you have, you know, let water just run down a, a steep, long hill, it's going to dig in. So, because it's going to go fast, and it's going to, you know. So are we, are we going all the way down to the levels out? Or, because, you know, I see right here, and almost everywhere I can think of, you know, we don't go down to the, you know, to where it levels out and the water slows down. Is, are we doing that this time? I mean, what does this design look like? I mean, I don't need to know exactly, but I'm just, I want to make sure that we're not going to put, you know, another six feet of riprap on there and call it good.
Yes, yes, sir. Great, great question. So the, the detail that you see up on your screens shows the existing outfall, and it looked like somebody had come in and maybe modified that outfall a little, some cinder blocks or something like that, because they were having an erosion problem. And, and maybe the fix in this case was worse, you know, like pulling a Band-Aid kind of thing. So part of the scope of the job, of course, is to remove that. You have, as part of the nature of your geology in that area, you have a little bit more sandy type material in your area. We have higher PI clays where I live. So the tendency for us is to try to use some of that material where we can. So part of the remediation here would be to remove, I think it was two or three feet of the existing sandy material, material that you have that's being eroded, and replace that with a higher PI material from our area that won't be subject to erosion. Additionally, at the, the outfall itself, where the head wall is, we would increase the amount of rock riprap that's there to try to slow those velocities down of some of the outfall water. Will it work? Your mileage may vary, but it certainly will be better than the condition that you have today, for sure. So, and, and they're going to hold us to warranty on it as well. So that, they've, you've got us.
So replace the sand with, with, with clay, especially blue clay, I would, I would imagine. Okay.
Yes, sir. And we have, you'd call it the black clays, I guess, in Maynor. We have a lot of crops that you see growing out that way. I think officially, it's called a Taylor Series or something like that, but you, you know the material. So that would be placed and compacted with heavy equipment and lifts as well. So...
Outstanding. Councilmember Meyer?
Yes. Since you brought the area up, Sylvia, behind, not the highlighted area, but behind the homes over there, I'm happy to know that we are working with the HOA, because from the beginning, it was Sylvia's, the really nice neighbors that have been coming. That is, that, just to let the people know, it is so important to let us know, to let our city manager know, because we had no idea there was a river running behind those homes, and it was washing away all the property. So it's a good thing to let us know, and I'm so happy we're addressing that, too.
Thank you, ma'am. Any further questions, comments? Seeing none indicated, I will certainly entertain a motion.
Motion to approve?
I have a motion from Councilmember Meyer. I have a second from Councilmember Lee. No further discussion indicated. Madam Assistant City Secretary, if you'll call the row.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Fossler?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. Motion passes unanimously. We'll move on to 9H. Consider An Act On Resolution Number R-2024-120, Approving An Interlocal Agreement For Cooperative Purchasing Buying Between The City of Bastrop And The City Of Round Rock, Attached As Exhibit A, Authorizing City Manager To Execute All Necessary Documents Upon Request, Providing For Findings And Repeating Clause And Establishing An Effective Date. Mr. Hagerty?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Tonight, we have an interlocal agreement with the City of Round Rock that allows us to utilize their contracts for other goods and services that we could back off of between each city. It is a, it's a contract that is in place until one or the other does no longer want it. And so, pretty, pretty slick deal. It just gives us the ability to use, or, you know, use their legwork that they've already put in, so we can, and vice versa, so we can make sure that we have a, a good working relationship with those guys. They, it's a contract that's in place with about 45 other entities that they have currently, cities and counties, counties also. And so, this is in relation to the auto, well, it's the paintless dent repair that we had initially brought. And so, the reason this is coming back is that they wanted to expand the scope of the contract in order to encompass everything that both cities are doing. So it's, it works out better for everybody and, and should be beneficial for all of us, so.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, but also I have a question for Mr. Hagerty. In your recommendation, you said this, this recommendation is related to paintless dent repair?
Yes.
Just paintless dent repair? Or is this, we're going to have to come back for, for not a change order, but at least incidentals on each time?
Yeah. And so initially, when we, the first one, which I brought to council on July 23rd, it was specific to that one service. And so, and to remove that one specific service, we're going to broaden the scope to all services that, you know, the city contracts out for third parties. So this will be included for the paintless dent repair for our vehicles. So this is just one more step to get passed, and then we can start the process of getting all those taken care of.
That's where I was going. I appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. A motion by Councilmember Plunkett, a second by Councilmember Meyer. No further discussion is indicated. Madam Assistant City Secretary, if you'll call the row.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Fossler?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. Motion passes unanimously. We'll move on to 9I. Thank you, Mr. Hagerty. Consider An Act On The First Read Ordinance Number 2024-32, Granting An Extension Of The Master Plan Exploration Of The Reed Ranch Plan Development District Being 24.04 Acres Out Of The Nancy Blakely Survey As Shown In Attachment Two Located At 615 West Highway 71 Within The City Limits Of Bastrop, Texas, Providing For Findings Of Fact, Providing For Repeat, Providing For Severability, Providing For Enforcement, Providing For Proper Notice And Meeting, And Establishing An Effective Date. Ms. Higgins, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's been a while since I've seen y'all. So you can see here, this is the location for the Reed Ranch development. It is west of the Riverside Grove subdivision. This here is the approved master plan that was approved in November of last year. Currently, the applicant is requesting an extension of the expiration of the master plan. Per the PDD ordinance, a master plan is good for one year from date of approval. So this master plan is set to expire in November of this year. They are requesting an extension based on a few factors, such as high interest rates, funding sources, but also they're, they're wanting to wait until Blakely is further along before they continue with the development to make sure it will be feasible for them. And for that, they're waiting on the city going through all the grant processes and all of that. The, the new, the recommendation was made by the Planning And Zoning Commission to grant a 12-month extension. Any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Higgins? Seeing none indicated, I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
I have a motion from Councilmember Plunkett, a second from Councilmember Meyer. No further questions or discussion. Councilmember Fossler?
I just want to bring up that the Blakely, I just watched that last P&amp;Z meeting. That's probably a 36-month build out for that road, right? So we will get further along, but it won't be complete. And they're not under the assumption that it will be complete by the time.
I don't believe so. So Blakely would be a 36-month build out. However, the timing should match. Timing should match. He's not going to go vertical in day 367, so.
Okay, I'm good. Thanks.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilmember Plunkett, a second from Councilmember Meyer. Seeing no further questions or comments indicated, Madam Assistant City Secretary, if you'll call the row.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Fossler?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. Motion passes unanimously. We'll move on to item 9G. I will tell you, we're on page five of six. 9J, Consider An Act To Approve Resolution Number R-2024-117, Granting Historic Landmark Status For 0.564 Acres Out Of Farm Lot Three East Of Main Street Within The City Limits Of The City Of Bastrop, Texas, Commonly Known As The JT Crisp House, if it's Crisp, I apologize, As Attached In Exhibit A, Providing For Findings Of Fact, Providing For Repeating Clause And Establishing An Effective Date. Ms. Higgins?
Thank you, Mayor. So this is the JT Crisp, Crisp. I'm not exactly sure either how to pronounce it, but it is at the corner of Cypress and Maine. This house is already on the National Register of Historic Places. The owner has now won local designation and local recognition. It was built in 1912 in the prairie school style. One, one thing that I found pretty interesting with this house, it was one of the first homes to be equipped with central heating. So they have requested designation, and that is what is here for y'all tonight. It was recommended for approval at the Historic Landmark Commission meeting.
Council, Ms. Higgins has laid this out. I will entertain, any comments or questions for Ms. Higgins? If not, oh, Councilmember Fossler?
I just want to give the compliments, I want to give compliments to the owners, because I've been, I live near to there, and they've been doing a lot of work on it, and it looks stunning.
It's a beautiful house.
A wonderful addition to the local registry as well. A motion to approve. Second?
I have a motion, I have a second. I also have a question or comment indicated. Councilmember Lee?
Thank you. I just wanted to piggyback on that. I grew up right around from that house, and my grandmother was the real help. She cleaned homes, and this was one of the homes she cleaned that we would go and play in the yard while she was cleaning and picked pecans, but never would have thought it was from 1912. So I...
It's a beautiful home, and they've maintained it so well.
Yeah, very messed up.
Thank you for that comment. Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Fossler, a second from Councilmember Meyer. Councilmember Lee, your light is still on. If no further questions or comments, Madam Assistant City Secretary, if you'll call the row.
Councilmember Fossler?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. Motion does pass unanimously. We'll move on to 9K. Consider An Act On Resolution Number R-2024-122, Appointing Five Members To The Bastrop Central Appraisal District, BCAD, For A Term Of One Year Beginning January 1, 2025, Providing For The Execution Of Official Ballot And Providing For An Effective Date. Madam, Assistant City Secretary?
Yes, Irma Parker, City Secretary. We received notice from the appraisal district that there had been some changes to legislature, the legislature made some changes to the tax code. So now we're going to elect five people to serve one year, and then the next couple of years are going to do staggered terms. The appraisal board does not set the rates. They do, their duties are to hire the chief appraiser, do the budget, approve contracts, set policies, procedures, and appointment of the appraisal review board. The current board of directors' term will expire at the end of this year. And I got to take that candy out. I did it. I didn't think I was going to come up this quick. But anyway, we need to nominate five people. There's five people that currently serve on the board that would have indicated they would like to serve again. And so this is up to the city council, what they want to do. They can appoint those five, or they can appoint someone else. So this is a council decision, and council decision only. Is there any questions?
Council, the city secretary has laid this item out. What is your pleasure?
Make a motion to approve the five that are serving and are listed in our packet.
I have a motion from Councilmember Meyer. I have a second from Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland. Seeing no questions or comments indicated, Madam Assistant City Secretary, if you'll call the row.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Fossler?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. Motion passes unanimously. It's pretty easy when you have five nominees for five positions. We will move on to 9L. Consider An Act On Resolution Number R-2024-123, Casting An Official Ballot To Elect A Region 10 Director Of The Texas Municipal League Board Of Directors For A Two-Year Term Ending In 2026. Madam City Secretary?
Yes, Mayor and Council, Irma Parker. Bastrop and Bastrop County are members of Region 10. I know that y'all do participate in the region activities, and you'll be hosting in December. And so they have their meetings on a quarterly basis. There is a president and a vice president, and then the secretary is usually the city secretary that's, whoever the president is, the city secretary becomes automatically the secretary. The current Region 10 Board Representative is, was currently the Leander Mayor, and she has chosen not to run again. I don't know whether she had reached term limits or what, but she is not wanting to run again. And in your packet, you had three individuals that had requested consideration to serve in this position. So it's a council decision and who they would like to cast a vote for, and we will process that and get that to TML after y'all decide who you want.
Council, the previous Region 10 representative prior to the existing one was, was my predecessor, Mayor Schrader, was on that. And this is, this is a pretty vital position with, with TML, and they represent our region. Councilmember Lee, you have a question or comment?
I do have a comment. So I know all three of these individuals and have been to many conferences with them, many, many dinners for TML with, with all three of them. I know all three of them very well. I think any one of them would be a good candidate. Nicole, Jimmy, I'm not sure what his last name is. I don't have the thing up in front of me.
Thompson.
From Smithville. He is trying to get into more active in TML, which is one of the reasons why he's wanting to run, and you guys have his resume there. one of the reasons why he's wanting to run and, and you guys have his resume there. Um, um, Dr. Chris in Maynor, same thing. He's wanting to become more active. I, at a couple of dinner, I think I want to say around the summer, at one of our dinners, we realized Region Ten hadn't had a quarterly meeting. And that was because the current person just had too much on her plate to kind of get us a little organized. So it was kind of decided to, let's start, we knew we were coming to Bastrop. I made sure they knew December we were going to be in Bastrop, but outside of that, nothing else was planned. So we, we ended up having the Region Ten meeting that we did in Buta that prompted that. And now, now there's more interest in being, you know, um, the director. So I would say out of the three, Nicole has been the most active. Nicole has been very active in planning things outside of the fact that she was not the Region Ten Director. Um, and she also hosts some other committees with, I, I actually, I'm, I'm going to project this out there. She doesn't know this. I could see her being president of TML at some point. That's how active she is in it right now. So just maybe to give you guys some perspective on who we have, again, all three of them, I think, would do well. Um, but if you're looking for one that has been the most involved, I would say it's Nicole.
Thank you, ma'am. Any, any other comment? Only comment, only comment I had is that we have two people from Travis County and one from Bastrop County. I like home cooking, so it's, uh, the, uh, but that's, uh, councilmember Meyer?
Thank you. And, um, I do know, um, just from TML events, the mayor and Maynor and extremely, uh, smart, very, very wonderful man. And I'm su, and I definitely know Jimmy Jenkins from Smithville and I've known Jimmy for a while. Jimmy did reach out to us, uh, asking for us to vote for him. I believe we had a letter also, maybe from, um, Nicole too. But Jimmy is just down the street from us and, uh, so that's my input on that.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Lee, you have another comment? All right, council, uh, what is, what is your pleasure? We have three qualified candidates. Uh, I will, uh.
Mayor?
Yes.
Last time we did this, we kind of just called out the name of who we voted for. Um, to, that way we would know. Instead of having to vote for each one, we just called out who we voted for and then we did a final vote.
I was, uh, I was not going to vote on each one. I was going to call for a motion with a, with a nomination.
Well, I motion to nominate Nicole Thompson.
I have a motion to nominate Nicole Thompson, Mayor Pro Tim, with Leander. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from councilmember Fossler. No further discussion. Madam City Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Fossler?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
No.
Councilmember Plunkett?
No.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
No.
Motion, motion fails. Uh, we had, uh, two, two, four, three against. I will entertain another motion.
I make a motion to nominate, uh, Jimmy Jenkins from down the road in Smithville.
Second.
I have a motion from councilmember Meyer, a second from councilmember Fossler. Seeing no further discussion indicated. Madam City Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Fossler?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Thank you, council. And I'm sure Mr. Jenkins thinks you also. Uh, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, madam city secretary. Uh, we will move on to item nine M, which we had tabled on eight twenty-seven. I will entertain a motion.
Motion to untable?
To untable. I have a motion with councilmember Fossler, a second from councilmember Lee. Madam City Secretary, if you'll call the roll on tabling, untabling this item.
Councilmember Fossler?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Item nine M, consider an act on resolution R dash two zero two four dash one one four denying the disannexation of land from the city's one-mile extraterritorial jurisdiction for two point zero zero acres of property known as Nancy Blakie, abstract number eight nine eight, located at twelve eight five West State Highway seventy-one, Unit A, Bastrop, Texas, in Bastrop County, Texas, bone requests and providing for findings of fact, repealer, severability, effective date, proper notice in meeting. Ms. Andres?
Good evening, mayor, council. This item is before you tonight because it was tabled at the meeting on August twenty-seventh. Um, at this time, I am actually having conversations with both the applicant and, um, the billboard sign, I guess, company, if you will, that seeks is, so essentially, background or just for posterity, um, essentially what occurred is a billboard company approached, this is not the right location map. Okay. A billboard company approached the castles and requested that that property be removed from the ETJ so that they could place a billboard. Um, upon doing that, then the sign company submitted a petition on their behalf to the city. Um, once we received the petition and upon me recommending denial, I decided to reach out to the applicant in advance of the council meeting so they could be informed of the recommendation I was going to be making so that they could have an opportunity to speak at the public meeting because, well, it's just the right thing to do. So, um, they showed up at the meeting and, um, you guys heard the item and decided to table it. And since then, um, Ms. Sylvia and myself had met with the applicant and they are agreeable to trying to pursue an alternate path forward, which is essentially taking a signed variance to the zoning board of adjustment for a billboard on the property. And if granted, then they'll drop the request for the petition. However, if the, um, ZBA decides to not grant the variance, which could very well happen because they're an independent board entitled to their own decision, then we will bring the petition back before council and recommend release of the property from the one-mile ETJ.
So right now, your request is to table it once again?
Yes. So right now, it's to postpone the resolution until the next available council meeting date, which will occur after the request of signs variance is heard at the zoning board of adjustment.
So moved.
That was exactly my question. And since, uh, councilmember Plunkett has made a motion, I will second it.
I have a motion from councilmember Plunkett. I was fixing to call on you. And a second from councilmember Meyer. Seeing no further discussion indicated. Madam City Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Fossler?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, ma'am. We will now move to item ten, executive session. City council shall convene in a closed executive session under Texas Government Code, section five five one point zero seven one, consultations with the attorney, and section five five one point zero seven four, personnel matters, to seek the advice of legal counsel and evaluate duties regarding the handling of certain pending open records requests. It is eight forty-eight. Council's in executive session. It is nine forty-six. Council is back in the open session. Moving to item number eleven, take any necessary appropriate action on matters posted for consideration in closed executive session. There is none to be considered. I will move to item twelve.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion to adjourn by councilmember, or Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland, and a second by councilmember Lee. We are adjourned.